So I wanted to start the second workshop with some thoughts. We had the papers now for, uh, well over a month, the first set of them. But I wanted to make sure we talked about a few things, and some of this you'll hear again at the council meeting. But just remember, our budget for the town should reflect the mission of the town's government. So what you put in the budget should be what you want to see happening for the town. Okay? So some of that will be just routine stuff, you've seen that, and some of it will be more than that. I wanted to emphasize some information to you because I had, uh, I've had at least one citizen say, and I didn't understand how much money, how did the town get so much money into the general fund? Right now, the general fund has five million two hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. That's unencumbered, not designated towards anything, but that's how much money is in the general fund. Uh, at this point in time, the general fund revenues are over expenses by two hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. And based on the projections and attributes for the budget, I expect us to be probably around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of revenues over expenses in the general fund. Uh, so having said that, I wanted to begin with, since you've had the work papers now for a period of time, and that's the first set of work papers, we're gonna give you an updated set here in just a bit. Do you have questions that you may have already come up with that you want to ask now before we start moving into new stuff? I'll do my best. Cindy and I have spent, you know, a month and a half working on all this, so there's a whole lot of work goes into getting you the work papers, um, so that you can review them and have an idea of what's there, to the degree that you desire. Those summary sheets, as I said last time, the summary sheets are at your level, what you should be most concerned about, um, and I can go back over that if somebody needs me to, otherwise I would seem to kind of know how to read that, um, because we need to have some extra ground to get through tonight.
I have one question.
Yes.
That I did not find here, and you may be gonna give them to me.
Okay.
Um, the properties that we own that receive rent, or if we rent any place out for a minute, or something like that, is that in the budget?
Okay.
Did I not get that one in this?
They're, they're, the only properties that we rent is the Stevens Building, and I think yet the total is ten dollars a year?
Twenty dollars, ten for the spot and ten for the museum.
That would be in miscellaneous revenues.
And ten for the?
Spot and ten for the museum.
Museum, okay.
Yeah, and it cost us right at?
Twenty-five seventy-nine, I think is the figure, for insurance.
Twenty-five.
Hundred and seventy-nine dollars, yeah, for the year. It's a lose-lose on the money, but it's a benefit to the community, so whatever y'all wanted.
I can't reach.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna try to stay focused here. Uh, the next, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I did, thank you.
Other questions that you might have. Okay, just to reiterate, in the general fund, uh, the most of our revenue comes from sales tax, okay? Uh, and then the next biggest is property tax, but property tax in itself will not fund any department within the town, so it's not that much money, it's about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, okay? So property tax is not our big revenue, sales tax is our revenue, and then this time of year, we start getting excise tax from tax returns, um, and we get business tax from tax returns, and so the spring of the year, we begin to get some of the revenues that we haven't gotten through the rest of the year. Okay, any other questions about that first set of budget worksheets that we gave to you? All right, so what we've done is, every day, the budget changes, okay? Because we get new information, we get additional revenues, and I can extrapolate and formulate what a projection of revenues can be based on new information that we get, uh, expenses, I can change those, what we're estimating, but mostly, those haven't changed, uh, other than the ones that I can point out to you in just a bit. Most of that was in the water sewer fund, okay? Um, so let's hand out the next set of work papers. And do the, do the wage thing first.
Thank you.
Just give them the wage thing first. Okay, on the first set of work papers, you've got the wage projections, okay, for the town, and we set these apart because salaries and benefits and capital assets are the two major expenses that the town has. So if I can have your attention up here for just a moment, and this will be on your last page of the salary and benefits that I just gave to you. What I want to show you is this, for the total general fund wage and benefits, the increase from last year is fifty-four thousand eleven dollars, and that represents a total of two-point-eight percent increase in general fund. The biggest part of that is every employee this year got a two-and-a-half percent, uh, increase, okay? The reason it was only two-and-a-half percent and not inflationary rate is because, some of you will remember and others may not, two years ago, we had a wage and salary study done, and at that point in time, we tried to get to the salary and wage benefit state, and we couldn't get some employees there, okay, but we made a big step there. And you have those grade and steps in that big book we gave to you long ago, okay, but it all was there. So we moved up, based on department heads' recommendations, each employee, two-and-a-half percent. It's not a cost of living increase, that was just a, what we call a merit increase based on the table, okay? But that's the first step at the budget. We also figured that health insurance is gonna go up five percent. Two years ago, it went up six percent, last year, it went up one to two percent, so I estimate it's five percent, I have to do something, and that is reflected in these figures here, okay? Salaries, wage and benefit for the water sewer fund, uh, is fifteen-point-nine-nine percent. Now, anybody, based on knowledge that you have, based on all the conversations that this particular council has, anybody know why theirs is more? Okay?
More education or degrees?
No, no, their only reason is, we added a position, okay, for water line installation, okay, and we added one part-time position, that's why that's up, okay? Not every employee just got one step, there were some that got more, but that's all based on department head or mayor recommendations, okay? But you have that information there. Some didn't get one for the rate that they're at right now because they just got one, okay?
So that fifteen-point-nine-nine percent are because of the, mostly because of the new hires?
That's correct.
So without that, you think that would still been around two-eight?
Yes, okay. Good question. You gotta figure, uh, a new, new person, uh, with weight, with benefits and everything, you just need to figure seventy thousand, seventy, seventy-five thousand, and then you got a part-time, we pay the part-time a little bit more because we get no benefits, okay, in order to get a part-time person, okay? So that's where that comes in. So you don't vote tonight, okay, but she and I need to have your kind of guidance a little bit about putting together the actual ordinance for the first reading. If I don't get any feedback from you, then I have to go with what I've put together, uh, based on the department heads' recommendations, and based on the revenues, historical precedents, and anything I know about new laws and new possible tax revenues. Uh, there was gonna be a cannabis tax revenue, but it did get taxed, uh, but there was one we got, transportation modernization, that's been calculated in there. So in any case, uh, that's where we're at. So you got the second set, you've got the salaries and benefits, that'll be one of the things, any questions, any concerns, I need to, oop, here, no, we're gonna decrease wages, give everybody a payroll cut, uh, or, how do you, two-and-a-half percent's not enough? If you've got any of that, you need to let me know, but you're not voting on it tonight, you're just giving, just giving the feedback.
Now, that's across the board, is that, that takes on five, that takes on five percent across the board.
If the department head said this person doesn't deserve merit increase, they didn't get one, okay? But in general fund, there was none that didn't get a decent increase, is that right? Everybody got an increase, everybody else has got an increase, department heads, okay? Uh, so it's all based on what they do. And the merit increase is based on their performance. Our personnel policy requires an annual, annual performance evaluation by the department head, and that's where they make recommendations about, yes, the person needs to be, have increase in pay, or if they're not doing the job well, and that kind of thing. So there's a method in place, that's systemic, that helps us to evaluate, okay? But it's not a cost of living increase, that, that's something that you folks have to look up yourself. All right, um, let's go ahead and give them the second set, all of them, they got them all in, all right. So the next thing I want to point out to you is, up here, you don't have this yet, okay? You made your points that I hope that you can communicate to me tonight, to Cindy and I, is that, yep, you go ahead with your salary and benefits right now, we're good, but we understand, we've got the first reading in May, we can change anything, and got the second reading in June, that we can change anything in this budget, okay? But I gotta put something together for you to look at, okay? So that's what we've, we've done. The next major thing that I need some guidance on is capital assets. What I want to show you, what's in the budget right now, are the capital assets, and this is July first through six-thirty of twenty-six. So in finance and administration, up here on the, on the thing, finance and administration, capital assets, computers, office equipment, and the big one is this Tyler ERP Pro software, okay, thirty-five thousand dollars, that's what we're, we're budgeting, okay? Police department, and for each of all these other departments, the department heads will speak to what they've got. Brits asked for a fully equipped patrol car, he has a methodology that looks to replace at least one every year, but any questions on that should go to him. And then some equipment from the drug, uh, the drug enforcement from the drug proceeds fund, around nine thousand dollars, um, and that's what he has asked for. Now, capital assets this year are not as big as they have been in the last, probably the last three years, four years, because through administration, there's been some attempt to upgrade all the old equipment that's been out there, okay? And we've gotten, and that's why we're at a surplus right now, okay? Because the twenty-year-old truck, we've got one twenty-one, twenty-year-old truck that's on the budget, recommendation tonight. If I'm going too fast, you got a question, anything I say stimulates a question, please ask, okay? Now's the time for us to do that. Okay, the public works department, um, we're looking at new streets after the water and sewer line rehabilitation, but we're gonna be able to fund that out of the street aid funds, but we're planning two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. I don't think we'll, we've got the money to pay the whole lot more, but I don't think we'll have water and sewer line, uh, done over more than that, okay? Drainage repairs, uh, less I'd have to speak to that, but I think that's pretty much what's running under the road and stuff of that nature. Okay, this, uh, public works has asked for this four-wheel drive snowplow truck, um, seventy-eight-five, I think that one's gone down a little bit, did you give me some data?
Fifty-nine-nine, I think.
Okay, yeah, so this was, this is one, make a note of that, that we've got it on your detail worksheet, if you look under the general fund and look for public works, you'll find, uh, the last page has capital assets there, uh, we just didn't, we haven't gotten it close. I think I just got that yesterday, maybe, the day before, all right. If you look up here, I'll show it to you, maybe I can get to it quicker than you can. Yeah, see, this twenty-twenty-five Chevy Silverado, four-wheel drive, with a snowplow, uh, sixty-two thousand. So originally, we had seventy-five, Roger and them, they did some more work, this comes off of the state contract, and we were able to reduce that one to sixty-two thousand, okay? Roger, how many plows you got now? Plows?
Plows, we have one snowplow on a truck and one that goes on a skid steer, that way we can use, kind of local. But the one snowplow is the only one we have, and it's on the twenty-year-old truck, which is getting pretty wore out.
Question to that, Roger. I mean, in all seriousness, I've had so many people calling complaining about the roads not being solved, that the roads don't been cleared. Can you guarantee with buying one of those that you'll have some clear roads? I'm just saying, I'm doing what the constituents wants, they sorry about it.
Well, I've been, I've been out here every storm, week three or four.
I've seen you on them. So, do you think that would help?
You can sing.
Well, it's gonna be exactly the same as we have, we'll put the snowplow that we have now on the new truck.
So you can't do your old snowplow, so you're gonna replace the old snowplow, plow on the shit?
The old snowplow, the one that you're talking about, is new, we just bought it, I think, a year ago. We're just moving it from one truck to the new truck.
Okay, okay, so you won't be getting, we won't have two snowplows?
Oh, this is a truck, not a plow?
Yes.
I mean, not a truck and a plow?
No, no, we already have a snowplow.
We're removing the old plow from the old truck, I guess.
Okay, all right. Cause I was thinking, if you're gonna do that, then we won't, I mean, sell one and one.
But it really depends on the rate of snow, I mean, the faster it snows, you know.
But we do have two salt trucks now instead of one.
I think y'all did a great job on it.
I thought they did too.
I mean, I come out every time and get in the truck with them, we're running the road with salt.
One, I passed y'all several times.
Well, very good, let's move forward. All right, that's all right, no, hey, those are excellent questions, and we'll make that more clear, Anthony, uh, it's not a new snowplow, but it is, okay?
It's, it's just the truck.
Just the truck.
I got one more question.
Yep.
I've got these, this new set, am I missing Brits? Is it in here somewhere?
Okay, Brits will, it'll be in the general fund.
In the general, okay.
The first pages will be the, and that table of contents will give you the page number.
I got you.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. All right, and normally, capital assets will be, for each department, be the last ones, okay? All right, and the other capital asset for public works is a side-by-side UTV, uh, I think we have a different price on that as well now. Yeah, now, yeah, we do have a different price, it's twenty, twenty thousand, so they can, what was given to me was used to fill graves, spraying weeds instead of pickup truck, water maintenance from Upper Ferry to McGuinness, so.
Is there any special equipment on that? Because that seemed like a high price, but I ain't bought one in several years.
Um, nothing special, it's, it's basic, other than a cabin windshield, but, uh, I think the diesel one was twenty-eight, so they were, they were, the prices I got, they're all, but this is, uh, this is a Sourcewell price from Cambodia.
State bid. That's what Sourcewell is, the state bid goes out and says, hey, the whole state will use you if you can give us the best price, and so we as municipality can participate. Not everything can be.
And you'll be using that for what?
Uh, that will be used for filling in graves in the cemetery, because we don't, it's a light enough vehicle that we can drive over the graves and do the work without damaging. And it'll also be used for the sewer lines that are down in the woods, that we can't get vehicles to, and it'll also be used for spraying, uh, spraying weeds in the streets and blah, blah, blah.
I think Michael's doing a good job spraying by walking.
Well, he is.
I think he's, he's doing a great job, he's walked, every time I see him, he's walking and spraying. Okay?
We had all that stone damage where you could have really used that last year, with the cemetery, since they don't cut back the trees and stuff.
Okay, once again, you've got time to think about all this, you've got all the way to June, in the second reading, we can change it at any time, uh, so, but that's all good questions, okay? All right, the next major item is the dog park bathrooms with water fountain and electrical recharging ports, that has been on the budget, it is on the budget for this year, but I don't think we're gonna be able to get there if you approve it or disapprove it, you've approved it thus far, it goes to bid, then you get to reject it or approve it then, um, but through the process, we won't get it done by June thirtieth, so it's gonna, the cost of it will go into the next fiscal year.
And that's coming out of?
General fund.
The general fund to pay for the bathrooms?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, everything's thus far, with the exception of that, uh, yeah, some of the drug enforcement, that's coming out of the drug proceeds fund, and then the paving will come out of the street aid.
It was in engineering last time.
All right, uh, other capital assets, and this is where the big money is at, uh, it's been, through administration, some of it coming together, okay? Rusty's Department, they need another pump station, uh, that's as good as I can give you, if you've got questions, we've already approved some for this year, those have been bid out, you approved the bid, we're waiting now and hoping that we get those installed by June thirtieth, otherwise, I'll have to adjust this and move that money back into, or to the next year. But there is one more that needs to be done, and that's what that ninety thousand represents, okay? That's at the drinking water.
What needs to be done? You said there's one more thing needs to be done.
It's actually just a, it's just a vertical turbine pump, we have to have, the CD operates on, uh, three high-service pumps for clean water, and we operate on three raw water pumps. Uh, y'all just voted to replace two raw water pumps, but I have one clean water pump that's gonna have to be replaced, and I thought, maybe we should try this in the next year. We won't get it done this year, but next fiscal year.
All right.
Thank you.
Then at the clean water plant or sewer plant, we've talked a lot about the bank erosion project, um, and where that money's coming from.
Scott, I thought our portion of that was about nine hundred, though, do you have to put it all in there?
I have to show how it will be funded altogether, so the two-twenty plus the five-eighteen is the seven hundred.
Okay.
And then South Park is just going to pay roughly thirty percent of that seven hundred, okay? So right now, we tentatively, we can change this on the fly.
Oh, okay, I see, they're five inches by grand, one to six, I got you.
So the Corps of Engineers paying the big chunk of it, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit more, okay, but this is what we got. Okay, water and sewer line maintenance, okay? We've got putting in clean water, that's the sewer lines. We're gonna be doing that through a state revolving fund loan that's already in place, we're already approved, we're waiting on the bid specifications to be drafted by the engineer, okay? Then those will go out, if we bid, and we're hoping by June first, that we'll have contractor working on the clean water lines, okay? They're not clean water, yeah, sewer lines, okay? I'm trying to get into the, what T-Dak wants you to say, but it's sewer lines, okay? And we'll talk more about that in just a bit, but we're borrowing, the total loan is two-point-seven million dollars, okay? The state will, using federal money, they give us twenty, on this one, twenty percent forgiveness, okay, uh, as long as we do what they tell us to do. That's how you get federal monies and state monies, and this is all state, or federal money coming down through the state. And then we'll, and when the project's all done, we should have a loan on the books for two-point-one million dollars, okay? That in itself will add cash flow of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars every month coming out of the water sewer, okay? It's all laid out in plan, I know what, five years, I've got it planned out, what we're anticipating. My crystal ball is probably better than y'all's when it comes to this, but it's still just a crystal ball projection based on the best state information that I've got, okay? The next project underwater and sewer line maintenance is the drinking water, okay? Right now, we have seven-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars of ARP money, that's COVID money, that has been passed down to the state for what's called a non-collaborative grant, and we are using that now, okay, uh, to put in, we get to have two major things out of that, an asset management plan, uh, which Derek's reviewing the draft, or the product now to accept that part of it, and then we have the rest of it for construction to put in new water lines. Hole Avenue was financed totally by the town of Carthage out of our monies, okay? It was a test, can we do what we think we can do? Then Smotherman is where they're working at now, and we are, I submitted a reimbursement request today, for the first time, for salary and benefits, uh, and some materials, okay, for that, so our part of that is gonna wind up being two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand three oh seven. It's always remember, whether it's a loan, or whether it's a grant, nine times out of ten or more, they always want the town to have some ownership, that means they got a, the town has to come up with some money, okay? Rarely would you have large dollars like this that's a grant, it just is not there, okay? But the state of Tennessee has a vested interest, in the comptroller's words, in the conference I went to, he said, "The snake in the grass for every municipality across the state is water lines and sewer lines," because it's all old, same with drinking water plants and sewer plants, okay? So prior administration began hitting this hard, and it just takes this long to get things in, okay? We did get Futral Alley water lined up.
It took a long time.
Yeah, it just takes a long time. I've been waiting on one reimbursement from the state since September for what was called the lead service inventory grant, that's been submitted, we're waiting on T-Dak to process. I check every two weeks what's the status, we're working on it. But we'll eventually get it, but, all that's figured into your budget, your budget worksheets. All right, so those are the two big areas, uh, unless you tell me something different tonight, we're gonna go, leave it as it is, but you've got all the way through June, whether the meeting is in June, uh, to decide. You actually got to June thirtieth, but I'd ask, hopefully, we can get some answers before then, okay? All right, now what I want you to think about is the water and sewer fund. We've hit this, but I kind of wanna make sure, this is all complex, and the public, they just don't understand, okay? And I don't blame them, I, it's complex, even for those of us who work with it every day and go into classes and study and work with it every day, it can be complex. But the two big projects, or three big projects, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, for the sewer lines, that's a loan, that's gonna be a loan, okay? The state of Tennessee, I know how much we can borrow on it, because I know what our revenues are, what our expenses are, and I can project, and I give it to you, our debt and service ratio, I know how much we can afford, okay? Total, that we're ever gonna be able to afford is about seven-and-a-half million dollars out of the water altogether, actually, the other thing, we don't have any debt in general fund. But sewer lines, so we, the state says, yes, we'll loan you this two-point-seven million dollars, and we will, once you've spent all the money, we will forgive, before we book the loan, we'll forgive twenty percent of it. Good, that's, that's called a capital contribution to us, okay? But just remember, whenever we kick this bad boy off... contractors gotta be paid, and those are gonna come out in big chunks. Part of the thing we have to do is I have to make sure we got enough cash to pay them until the state reimburses me three months later. They don't give you the money upfront. That's why we have to pay it. You asked to be reimbursed, but you gotta send them the council checks to show that you did it. They don't give you the money upfront because they don't know how you're gonna use it. Out in California, somebody's used it wrong sometimes, okay? It don't happen in Tennessee. But the reality of it is, what I'm saying is, this is a reimbursement. Now, in order to get that $2.7 million loan, state said you have to sign a resolution that you will increase your water rates at least 3% to 6% over the next five years. Otherwise, we're not gonna let you have that loan. Now, if we hadn't have done the 33%, that would have been 36% to 39% increase in order just to work on our sewer line. The reason we wanna work on them is because right now, we have about a 40% loss of rainwater and sewage, okay? That we have to pay to treat that water, and we get no revenue from it. 40% of the water that runs through the sewer plant, we can't bill anybody for, okay? It's because the pipes are, got cracks, or they nonexistent, okay? So that's why it's in our best interest to make this happen, okay? Because it'll eventually save us money. Next thing is the bank erosion, okay? $2.3 million project, Corps is paying 1.6 of it. We're paying some of it, whether we paid out of reserves or we paid out of borrowed money. I think we've hit that one enough. When is it gonna happen? I don't know. The water lines, okay? We've talked about that. What I would want you to really grasp as best you can, without an accounting degree, is this $2.7 million, regardless of how it's been paid for, whether it's state money, federal money, our money, okay? Or a private citizen says, "Hey, I just wanna get my $1 million stored and put in sewer line." However it comes to us, on our accounting records and for figuring our required profit and loss, we have to set that up to depreciate over 40 years, okay? So that increases our expense on the quote income statement over 40, $2.7 million divided by 40 years, okay? The concept being, you're gonna have to replace that at some point in time. And so we want to, the accounting principles say, allocate the cost over the life of the asset. Say, "Well, I don't wanna do that." And you gotta change the entire accounting and business world altogether. It's not an option for us, okay? It's bank erosion. Though the Corps, they're giving us $1.6 million of taxpayer money. It's not free money. We're paying that too, okay? We pay the tax, the federal dollars, okay? So I've always fought against, "Well, it's free money." No, it ain't, okay? It's federal, federal tax dollars. We've gotta set that up for depreciation purposes. It's an expense over 40 years, all right? And for whatever water lines we put in, I gotta set that up for depreciation purposes over 40 years. So in two years' time, we're gonna have an additional, probably $100,000, $150,000 of extra expense on our water sewer fund financial statements. And that's why they are always checking the water sewer fund, because it has to operate at a profit, okay? Else they determine, P-A-U-D. P-A-R-D? It's the regulatory division of?
T-BOR.
T-BOR, okay. In any case, they will come in and say, "Hey, if you've had a negative change in net position or a net regulatory profit or loss for two years in a row, we will come in and we'll decide how much of a rate increase you will do." Okay? It's not because anybody is wasting money. It's just the nature of trying to get the, the infrastructure in place to benefit the citizens.
Hey Scott, will you explain why the bank erosion has to go on the depreciation being how it's not even, it's like a bunch of rocks in the water?
Well, it is a capital asset, okay? Because you can't write it off in the, it, if that bank is gonna last many years, hopefully at least 40. The accounting concept is you depreciate the expense over its useful life. If I go buy a copy of paper, I'm gonna write it off in the year I buy it, because I'm gonna use it in the year that I buy it, okay? But for a capital asset like that bank, okay, or these water lines, those are gonna be used over multiple years. And so the concept is, yes, you'll replace it eventually, but you gotta recognize expense over the life of the asset. The other approach is, in the tax world, which I worked in for many, many years, say, "Hey, I'd like to take Tax Code Section 179 and write it all off in the year that I buy it. That way I pay less taxes." Well, it's a totally different concept here, because we're not paying taxes on it, okay? As I've told her, my goal is not to teach her, to be a CPA and do public accounting and auditing and all that, but to teach her to do this job, okay? Same with you. My goal is to help you with municipal finance. Okay, having said that, I want you to understand as best you can why certain things are being presented and why we're having to do it. What does the new water lines do? You've seen the examples of the water lines, the lead pipes, iron pipes that are out there. It's just rust, but it is rust, okay?
Has everybody seen them?
And it's safe to drink it. Say again, it's safe to drink it, okay? But those pipes, eventually, we're gonna clog all the way up and the pressure, I can't speak to all the technical details. They can tell you why. The reality of it is, we need to do this for the sake, to the degree we can. We got about three years. I think it'll take about three years, and we'll have done all we can do, all we can afford to do. Well, on the drinking water. But we, we're making a look at it. We're doing what we can with it, okay? Did we buy some additional equipment in order to put these in? We did, okay? Why did we make that decision? Because I sat down and I computed based on the last two contracts we had to do Smotherman and so forth. Those were gonna be about $385 per square foot of line put in, okay? So then we did Hole Avenue, because I wanted to know what does it cost us to do it? So I kept up with every expense, every hour, every labor, every salary and benefit. And I've got the detailed worksheet out here. How I come up with, it takes us about $84 a square foot for drinking water line, okay? There is that much overhead and, um, profit in the contractor's bid. I know this because I used to have construction contractors as clients. I know how it works, okay? That $84 includes, I put in everything that I can think of. I put in contingencies. I put in depreciation. Uh, 10% of our total depreciation for water sewer fund, I put on the, it ain't near that. But I wanted it overshot. I wanted to shoot it high as I can get, okay? Uh, 'cause I wanted us to have good data to make decisions on. And that's my goal, is to give you accurate information every time. If I ever say something you disagree with or think that I said it wrong, please tell me, because I don't want you to have bad information. I want you to have good information. And as I've said many times before, come to the head of the stream for financial information. Don't get it off Facebook. That's not the place, or TikTok, or whatever those are. Go to the head of the stream, and I can give you the accurate data, okay? All right, I've got, how many minutes left? Five minutes.
Do you wanna touch on the, the percentage?
Yeah, I mentioned that. Between now and five years, okay? We're required to go at least 3% to 6%. My recommendation has always been, you always need to increase rates every year at least for inflationary costs. That's why we had to wind up doing 33%. It's no fun. It is not fun. Trust me. I've bled as much as anybody, okay? But the reality of it is, I'm not doing my job if I didn't say, okay? But my recommendation to the council is that you consider a rate increase every year at least to cover inflation so that you don't ever have to do another 33% increase.
So what, do you recommend a rate increase, percentage pay?
I would say 2%. That will at least catch your inflation.
And I had figured that 2.5% increase over the current, um, rates. And the minimum monthly bill will only go up $1.23 for citizens inside the city limits. And it'll only go up to $0.81 outside the city limits.
$1.23?
Yes, ma'am.
And then 80?
81. And then the average user uses 5,000 gallons of water, um, every month. That's gonna go up $2.66 over the average bill currently. That's inside the city limits. And then outside, it's gonna go up $1.56. And that's at 2.5%.
Okay, let's hand out the projected first. While she's handing that out, I wanted to give to you what you're going to see and what you actually begin voting on in May, okay? And up here on the screen, this is, the budget ordinance is a law, okay? The first reading will be in May. And so there will be some updates to this, but you can kinda see this is the requirement of the state, okay, the comptroller's format. So all the information in those detailed, uh, reports that I gave to you, it all flows into this one document, okay? So for example, if you look up here, you see the general fund. You see how it's condensed down, where we have to report what was the actual revenues and expenses, everything from our audit in the first column. Then we have to estimate through June 30th what our revenues are gonna be and what the expenses are gonna be. And that's a very much an educated guess. And then these budget figures, this is the summation of those worksheets that you have, okay? The most important thing of those worksheets for you is to look at the cash flows, the summary that they give you. Most of them are being paid one, okay? So let me just give you a quick example. We went through this one last time. This is the general fund, okay? So right now, next year, I'm anticipating $3.3 million of revenue to the general fund for expenditures, transfers. Not any transfers this year. Hasn't ever been since I've been here, but it's one of the things that could happen. Finance and administration, that's the total for finance and administration. Police department, 1.2 million dollars, okay? How did I come up with that? Look at your detailed worksheets. And I didn't come up with it. I really summarized, Cindy and I, based on what the department heads have said and based on the historical precedent, okay? And then public works. Your capital assets are in there, okay? So the total that I'm anticipating, that I'll reflect in that ordinance, is that we're looking to have next year $75,037 of revenues over expenditures. I know it's understated, okay? If we don't do any major things, okay? To me, the big elephant in the room that will soon make his appearance is the police and administration building, okay? This building's 55 years old. It's older than that. It's been used by the town of Carthage for at least 55 years, okay? Prior administration, this administration's trying to move this needle forward. It's a lot of money, no doubt about it, okay? The thing, thing you need to think about is how, number one, do I even wanna do it? Okay, and if you don't, then I would say, quit beating around the bush. Just say, "We're not gonna do it." And then, two, if you do want to do it, it's wide open what you want, what you can do. That right there was just to get the conversation going, okay? If you wanna make it out of trailers, you could do something. We ain't even got cost to that, but it got the ball moving, okay? Now, it may be moving in a negative direction, but either way, it got the ball moving, okay? At every step of the way, remember, you have the opportunity, okay? Because you approve when anything's bid. And always remember this, any engineer is always gonna shoot the moon when they estimate cost. That $2.6 million you saw for the preparation of that land? He told me, he said, "It's high, particularly high because we just had such a short time to put it together," okay? I gotta give it up. So I'm done. I will be available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
So Steve, two break teams.
Policy to order. Any citizens that wanna speak on the purchasing policy, please step forward. This is the purchasing policy.
Okay.
For fifteen minutes of public hearing, yes.
On purchasing policy only?
Yeah, that's all, it's public hearing. Because we're voting on the second time when the purchasing policy has to have a public hearing.
I, um, I've been, I've sort of shared with some of the council members, but I feel ten thousand dollars without council approval is more than enough to take care of the needs of this little town of two thousand people. If we up it to twenty-five thousand, that's more than some people make in this city. Now, if we were Nashville, Knoxville, maybe a larger city, you'd see that. I think a lot of people just say, "We need council approval." Ten thousand is fine, if there's emergency, you work that out. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Been going all night. Just like the same thing. No sense in worrying about it, right?
Anybody else wanna speak on the purchasing policy?
You know, I'd like to speak, but maybe I'm off base or something on just an opposition of, you know, what you're... I'm a property owner in city Carthage. And...
Is this about the purchase of the property?
It is.
Okay, that'll come up in the actual meeting. You'll get a chance to speak on it.
Thank you.
Matter of fact, it'll be... The first thing on the agenda is citizens' concerns on that. You're welcome.
Uh, no. Gonna take a break? We got, we got like ten minutes, I think.
Hold on, we gotta make sure nobody else wants to speak, and then we get to dismiss the meeting.
I mean, I agree with you.
Oh, thanks.
If we don't have anyone else that wants to speak on the purchasing policy, we'll go ahead and close out the public hearing portion of this. All right, we'll come back at six o'clock for the regular meeting. The meeting, April thirtieth, at two-twenty-five, is the town of Carthage's council order. Roll call, Danielle, please.
Councilman Gray?
Here.
Councilwoman Green?
Here.
Councilman Gray?
Here.
Councilman Liffey?
Here.
Councilman Teddy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Here.
City Attorney, Dr. Lynn?
Here.
Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of amendments from last meeting. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Motion passes. Consideration of non-emergency invoices over ten thousand. Scott, you wanna handle that?
Oh, we're suited, okay.
Okay. As far as the expenditures on the first sheet that I gave to you, there's only one that's not the normal retirement or health benefits. And that's the Fortaline Water Works. That's the fifty-five hundred feet of water line. That's for new water lines that we're putting in using the state water infrastructure grant money. So you approved the bid, and we got the materials, and now we're looking to pay the bill. The one that I got today, that's not on your list, is from, I got a friend out for you here. Take one of those, pick one of those. This is for the Enterprise Resource Software. That's what we use to do all the accounting, all the utility bill, payroll and everything. The annual renewal of it is normally thirty thousand. But we had some issues that we were able to get some credits for, and it's twenty thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. I went ahead and put it on today's list because of something not to have to wait another month to pay them. So those are the items over ten thousand. Questions for me?
I'll make the motion to... I didn't mean to cut anybody out, but I'll make the motion to approve.
Any discussion? Roll call, well, please.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lemon Green?
Yes.
Councilman Gray? Councilman Liffey?
Yes.
Councilman Teddy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is citizens' concerns. What I'm gonna ask is that anyone that lives within the city limits, please come up, state your name, where you live, and then speak, and then we'll let the rest of them. But once you leave that podium, do not address anybody at this council. And a council, if you're talking to the constituents, you're out of order. Then you'll be told that you're out of order. There'll be no communication from this table to them until after they're done speaking. And when they're done speaking, they're gonna be quiet.
Go ahead, go first. Good to see you guys. I know there's a lot of people here that are probably gonna speak to the property over there. So I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on that. I'm just gonna ask what you guys, and the reconsideration, that you both know on it. Did the petition, I'm sure you guys have seen it. Eight hundred people that signed it, some in the city, some other in the county. But it's a lot of people. And like I said, I'm sure there's more people here that are gonna speak to that, so... That's the one item I asked that you both know on. The second is the second item on unfinished business, the purchasing policy. I know that it passed the first reading, but I ask that it doesn't pass the second reading. That increases to, as far as I'm aware, that increases the ability of the mayor to spend money without your approval. From ten thousand dollars or more than doubles it, pushes it up to twenty-five thousand dollars. You guys are here as oversight over the money that we send in. I think that that is inappropriate. Ten thousand is more than enough, and that's what I would ask that you guys would not pass the on second reading. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesse.
There is a question, if they own property, they get to speak, can't they?
Yeah, they all get to speak, but I wanna do the city residents and just roll it through that way. That's all I did. If you want, Chris, come on up and speak.
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, okay. I'm not, you know...
Well, thank you. I'm here for opposition to the spending plan, to build a new building. Just as you alluded to tonight, the looming problem for municipalities is water issues. I'm on the utility district, twenty-fifth utility district. And the change in the lead and copper rule, you know, for the next ten years, you're gonna go through digging up all these lead pipelines and having to replace them, which is gonna be an astronomical cost to the city of Carthage and to all utility districts. So I think that's gonna be more important than spending money on a big spending project of a building. You know, that is projections of, I'm guessing, y'all can probably tell me more, five million dollars for building the site preparations, land purchase. You know, the interest on that's about seven percent, so you're talking about the first year about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So over the course of the loan being ten years, you easily have spent a million dollars, so... One thing about Smith County or Carthage in general is, in nineteen-seventy, there were twenty-four-hundred-and-ninety-one residents in Carthage, population-wise. Today, it's contracted by about four percent, so it's gotten smaller. So think about it. Right now, in Tennessee, thirty to ninety days delinquent homeowners or mortgage payers has doubled over the course of two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four. We've seen unprecedented inflation in Tennessee and America in general. We all live it every day, and that is going to the grocery store, buying medication, paying your insurance, whatever it may be. The per capita income household is fifty, or sixty-five thousand dollars in Carthage. So there are people today in Carthage that can't handle a twenty, twenty-five percent property tax increase, and that's what's gonna happen. Spending money comes easy. Spending taxpayers' money comes very easy. I've served on the county commission and the school board. Smart legislation is saving the taxpayers' money. You have alternatives in Carthage. And that is, you have a beautiful courthouse up here that's empty. That is the way I understand it. The federal government's gonna get grants to make it, or Carthage is, to make it beautify it. There's nobody up there, get ahold of Jeff Mason. Mason, talk to him, get him to lease that to you for little or nothing, and utilize that space. You have Ace Hardware down here that's empty. You've got the old Texas booth building. There are lots of alternatives to spending a lot of money. Twenty-five years ago, there was ideas of spending money for a new municipal building. C.B. Hackett went up here and bought the old Turner School, turned it around, made it a beautiful building at a very low impact. So I ask you, well, thank you.
Do you mind if I address some of those?
Absolutely.
I think, I think you... The water fund, where the water line's coming from, is totally separate. We, it has nothing to do with the general fund. You can't take the money from the general fund and fix water lines. Those two projects are two totally different entities.
Sure.
Okay? There is no need for a property tax increase because we've had, we've been collecting property taxes in this town forever. That's why we have such a surplus.
Sure.
Scott's one, we had, it's budgeted in the budget right now for three-point-five million dollars for this year. And no, nothing, no property tax increase, and there won't be any.
Right.
So if that's a concern, take that out of there. Now, I can't say in twenty years they won't have a property tax increase, but I won't be here.
Right, right.
But the object, it is not gonna be a ten-year loan. What'd you say, a thirty-year loan, Scott?
Twenty, twenty to thirty.
Twenty to thirty-year loan. That way, it's paying generational, not just paying, not everybody in this room's paying for it in five years.
Sure.
Everybody pays it. Another thing I wanted, I talked to Randy Wayfield after the meeting, and he's offered to give us the two-point-one acres up front where that road is and the seven acres, which is nine acres for seven-hundred thousand dollars, which breaks it down to seventy-seven thousand dollars an acre. Okay, that's something new. I also went and talked...
Say that again, ma'am.
He's offered to give us that two-point-one acres up front for the road and the seven acres for the seven-hundred thousand, which breaks the price down to seventy... You don't need to get your answers from back there, just text it up here on the screen.
Excuse me?
Yeah, you don't need to look at her for information.
Gracious.
So what it is, is that the two acres is free, and then the five acres, or seven acres, is seven-hundred... So what it is, is that the two acres is free, and then the five acres, or seven acres is seven thousand, which breaks it down to seventy-seven thousand dollars an acre.
But we don't need seven acres.
That's all, we think we can't buy it. It's okay. If we don't need seven, we just won't buy it.
You know, that's like me saying I'd like to buy a lot of lakes.
I agree with you. I don't disagree. But you guys, you guys passed right over the three-acre thing that was cheaper. Didn't want, didn't want even look at that. So, but that's what I'm saying. It's not, there's no plan of raising property tax because we do have the revenues without the property tax coming in. It's sales tax that we're running off of.
Well, I rise to a point of order.
You're out of order when you're looking behind there talking, looking at her, and she's shaking her head at you every time. That's where you get your information from. Anyway.
You're out of order. This is citizens' concern.
You don't tell them I'm out of order. This is, I'm the chairman of the meeting, and I said you're out of order. We're done.
I fixed to say it was your meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
It's not your meeting, it's the council meeting.
Okay. Next person. I'm sure that's gonna be that one.
Of course, sir, and I really appreciate, again, your gracious welcome of us. And you were out of order, but that's my point as a citizen.
Thank you.
I want to address this because some of the comments you're making, I'm sorry, but you're a little off-base about this, what you were saying to Chris.
Enlightening.
First of all, we have a...
You were the man that said, "Do not speak." Let me explain something to you. They won't speak to us, you don't speak to me. Don't say that to me. You have no reason to say anything.
I can say anything I want to to you.
Well, you're the reason all these people here for the false information you put out.
False information? It was your information.
No, it was not.
It was the information.
Let's go to the meeting back to order. We'll argue about this afterwards.
I would like my time rerun, please.
Yeah, you can have three, four minutes.
Okay, just stop it.
Say it all you want, I don't care. It's third week.
And, and sir, there is a point of order when the chair is out of order. You need to read your Robert's Rules, but anyway.
I did rerun it, anyway.
Basically, what you've been saying in a couple of different meetings now is that we have all this surplus of water and sewer, plus, oh, hold on, please. This is my time. Plus surplus of general fund. The reason you have that surplus is because the prior administration put those into reserve for our water and sewer lines to match what would have been principal forgiveness loans of up to twenty-four million at sixty percent principal forgiveness. So that's why you have that surplus. You have a surplus in the general fund because these good gentlemen knew how to conserve their money. They, we, they did things that were the needs of the city and not the whims of the city. If it was, it was something you wanted, needs came first. That's why you have this surplus, because these good gentlemen, the people who ran the city, did that. So please don't misconstrue that we have the money to pay for this. Now, we had four hundred thousand dollars if you had wanted to buy that Chorban Services building. We could've paid for that outright and, and had a thousand, hundred thousand extra to fix it. But you, sir, were the one who said, "Oh, we don't need a new ci..." Hold on.
I'm not saying anything, hold on.
We don't need a new city hall, and that's too expensive, even though some of these supervisors sent a council letter saying, "Please let us buy that building." If you were, "Oh, it's in the record. It's in the record," and I, there are copies of those. And people here can tell you they sent those records. So please don't misconstrue that we have funds that we can just willy-nilly pay for what you want to do over there. If you go over there right now, that place, that place is soaked with water. It always is when there's a heavy rain. And why in the world do you want to put that on the citizens of Carthage? It makes no sense. We had a perfectly good plan before you put that extra piece of prop, whatever that thing is, that's protecting the water lines. I know that you were wanting the guys to do that, which is great that they're willing to do that. That's a whole different ballgame. We should've hired people, but that's a whole different ballgame. But if you hadn't put that there, there's plenty of room on this to build an addition to this. Build it right beside, two stories, move everybody over there, gut this thing and make it a huge council room. It's a, it's a no-brainer. Several architects who have looked at this property have told us that. So, sir, you are misleading. Those funds are not there just to be used at your whim. They're there for the water and sewer lines specifically, and they're there for the general fund to do the paving over those lines. So, yeah, we've got a lot of money, but it's specifically earmarked for things that we need in this city, like Chris said. We, whether you like it or not, we need water and sewer. We can't even do a new sewer plant unless we get new water lines. Our engineer, who did that huge study of our town, said, "You do not put in a new sewer plant until you've improved your sewer lines." Otherwise, you have nothing to get...
Thank you.
No, my time's not up. I have extra time.
How much time does she have, Scott? Give her another minute, two minutes, I don't care.
I restarted.
Three, four, ten. You gotta restart it.
I, I'm, I'm almost finished. I just wanna say, logically, do what as Chris and these other folks are suggesting. You don't, you made a reference to building a sewer plant over there. Well, we don't have water, sewer lines to carry to there until we fix all of these all around town. We, if you've seen the picture of the inside of our water lines, which you saw when we did Main Street, that's our priority. Water and sewer, police, fire, those are our priorities in this city. And yes, we need a new building. We've been trying for years to get a new building, one of which you shot down. And that would've been perfectly, already had a walk-in fireproof wall. So that's all I wanna say. I, I'm sorry, but it just, when you start saying things like, "We've got all this extra money to throw around," we don't. It's earmarked. It has been for several years now, and you're spending it willy-nilly. And when you put things around like a, I don't know, wonderful things at the park, that's great, but guess what? That, that takes grants. That's not what you use your taxpayer money. You use your grants to put things at the park. The taxpayer money is the water, sewer, our basics. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm gonna clear up something about this twenty-four million dollars. Scott, would you speak to that, or Rusty, you was in the conversation, would you speak to the point?
Only if I get to refute.
No, ma'am, you don't, don't. Because there's been, you were in the meetings by yourself. That's the good thing, okay? They, they weren't gonna give us twenty-four million dollars and sixty percent.
This is our meeting.
They, they don't do that. Scott, would you go and explain that to them?
That's not what I said, again. Please.
Say, say exactly what you just said, please.
If you're going to ask them to do it, then at least let us rebut what they're saying.
Say exactly what you said when we're talking about the twenty-four million dollars.
I said you misquoted me.
Well, I'm, I'm asking you to say again what you just said about the twenty-four million dollars that we had that I turned away or whatever.
Okay, all right. We had five different pools of money from TDEC. Because we, of all the cities around, got put on their priority loan, and so we had pools for...
It's called a priority ranking list, yes, I agree.
Yes. We had pools for water lines, for sewer lines, for repairs to the water plant, repairs to sewer plants, which they're already having to do. Each of those had a different matching of, excuse me, a priority loan principal forgiveness. So for the water lines, yes, it was sixty percent. For the sewer lines, maybe it was fifty percent. For some of the things at the water and sewer plant, like the lead replacement that Chris is talking about, that was a hundred percent. We could've gone through our town, a hundred percent guaranteed loan. That we, it was, it was like they knew we had to do this. It was almost like, "Here, please do it." All I'm saying is, please stop saying we have all this extra money in our city when we need it for our specific needs in this city. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. I agree. But if you think I'm stupid enough to turn back two twenty-four million dollars at sixty percent, you don't know me very well. I would've gladly had that money. That's not how it works.
Then how does it work? You tell us.
Well, we just got one, is, we gotta pay twenty percent. It's twenty percent forgiveness.
Because you threw away the other possibility.
No, ma'am, that's not correct. Trust me, I checked on it when I first got here. You had twenty-eight million dollars tied up in loans that we couldn't have paid for.
No, no, that was not...
Scott, would you please address the finance side of this, 'cause I, I can't get into the finances with her.
You know, just, let's just go on, 'cause this is getting, I mean, we could go on.
No, I want, I want the public to hear this.
I think it needs to be cleared up.
I think the public needs to hear this.
Okay, then can I bring in the actual factual material that we got from TDEC, which I don't have with me?
We can, we can set it up for the next...
Can I bring in all, can we table this and let me bring in all the letters from TDEC?
We're citizens' concerns. We can't table citizens' concerns.
Well...
We can put it on the agenda and discuss it next meeting.
And then I'll bring in everything from TDEC that we received, telling what we could've gotten in this town.
I mean, that's great.
I'll be glad to.
Because obviously, they told you something different than they told us.
I'll be glad to do that. I'll bring in all, there's several letters, and I'll share those with you.
I don't know what it's for. I'm just saying, she, she's saying that I'm spreading false information. And then I know for a fact she's spreading false information because we checked on, I would've loved if that twenty-four million dollars, we wouldn't be in the position we're in right now.
Do we need to spend time in a meeting talking about...
Not really, no, but I just don't like them getting into false. That's the problem. We get too much spread false information out here. We don't get the truth and transparency.
So are we gonna table this conversation?
No, this is concerned.
Now I'm done.
If you wanna hear, if you wanna hear what Scott has to say, that's great.
Either now or next night.
I'll make the motion that Scott be allowed to say what he, you know.
So, okay.
Please, Scott.
I'm a hired hand.
But you know the numbers.
That's right.
And you were here for both administrations, so you know how it went.
The process for a state revolving loan is you fill out paperwork, and you send it to TDEC. And based on your poverty rates and the needs, which we need more than twenty-four million, we probably need seventy million dollars to replace drinking water plants and all that. So there was a paper sent in to get on the priority ranking list for state revolving fund loans, just like the SRF that I explained to you earlier. Depending upon the poverty rates, ATPI, it's called, can't remember what exactly. TDEC creates a priority list, which says, okay, if we have the money from the government, federal government, we will try to fund you in this order. And that's why it's a priority ranking list. That's only the first step in the SRF process. The next step is you have to get all the plans together, which all that was, was done, or can be done, or would've been done, till you come to the point where, and I'll just use this as an example. We just asked for SRF, borrow two-point-seven million dollars to do a well-needed project, which is to correct the inflow and infiltration. And they have come back and told us, "You don't have the capacity to borrow two-point-seven million dollars in the water sewer fund unless you increase your rates three to five, or six percent over the next five years." So intentions were wonderful and great.
Yes.
Okay? But the SRF process has multiple steps, and one of them is your financial ability to pay. The most money we would ever be able to borrow and be able to pay it back could be around seven and a half million dollars. That's why we had the debt policy. We couldn't have done all of that, okay? They wouldn't have allowed us to go any further. They weren't gonna allow us to go any further with this without getting the council to say you would agree that you will increase your rates three to six percent over the next five years, 'cause that's all you can afford. I would love to have followed through with all that. We couldn't. We had a meeting with Lena Jones and some others, all the water sewer department heads, basically, that was explained to us. You can't do it that way. You don't have the capacity to do it. Now, let me say this, as I told you earlier. This whole process is tremendously complex. And some very, very smart people, okay, can look at this stuff and not understand everything that's there. Look at the intentions. Intentions are good, and these can be positive conversations. You don't have to fuss. The reality of it is, I try to deal in the facts. We can't borrow, couldn't borrow that much money, even if we'd had fifty percent. Fifty percent of twenty-four million is fourteen million. We couldn't have done it. We could not have done it.
So in this administration, and the last, we didn't have a hundred percent covered loan for anything?
No hundred percent covered loans.
'Cause that's, that's the confusion.
The best we had was Appalachian Regional Commission for Turkey Creek Booster Station.
And it was earmarked and never funded? It's not what Senator said?
There has been a lot of discussion with Councilman Rose.
Congressman.
Congressman Rose. Forgive me, Mr. Rose. About getting federal monies to come down to us, okay, 'cause we definitely hit along with all the rest of the state. But when we met with the Corps of Engineer, who was Chris Pickering, where all this money would come, he said, "It's not there." It was earmarked, and they couldn't get any of it through Congress. So that money was not available. Might some be in the future? I don't know, okay? But as far as us ever being able to borrow more than seven million dollars, mathematically, it's not possible, even if we got fifty percent forgiveness. And they don't give fifty percent on every one of them. And there is no guarantee that you'll get any percentage. It's all based on, is the federal money available. The first step is what we completed, and I think it was twenty-seven million dollars. The first step that was completed was to get on the priority ranking list for clean water and for drinking water. And that was, I never saw that document until after it was signed, okay? Now, good intentions, okay? Good intentions. Seven years, six years in the Marine Corps, they always had a thing. Good initiative, poor judgment, okay? Well, I personally would rather take fourteen steps forward and two back, but I'm more than willing to go through all the source of information. But the reality of it is, that wasn't going to be a possibility, okay? So I'm not gonna deal with the emotions of it and all that. I will always try to give you the facts so you can make good decisions. It's irrelevant now. It's done. It was never going to happen that way, but we have made some steps. The prior administration made some great steps, highlighting the water lines, highlighting the sewer lines, so that this could be moved forward, okay? So why can't we leave it at that, say we're moving forward, okay? But remember, I am a hired hand, and my job is to give you information for you to make decisions.
Thank you.
Next person that wants to speak, your public concerns?
Hi, my name is Stephanie McRae. Most of you know me. I live at seven-twenty-two Jefferson. I don't know if all of you have had a chance to read the email I sent earlier. If not, I get it. It was really long, and I waited till the night fore. I'm not here to tell you what way to vote. I'm past hearing about that. I really want to see all of this to stop, 'cause it's been going on for like eight years, and we are tired. And it has become just all that Carthage is and nothing good is able to happen because it's all it is. So if you haven't read my email, please do. I would implore you to not vote on anything tonight for multiple reasons. One, you all need more information. Two, there are already people incredibly upset right now, on the council, back there, but really, all that matters is y'all, because you're the ones who had to vote. And when you're upset, it's a lot harder to think clearly. So please don't vote on anything tonight. And then I've got, oh, I did that, I shouldn't have done it. I have a question. At the beginning of this meeting, you said, "Nobody talks to us. We don't address directly you all. We don't address each other," all things, correct?
Yes.
And that was period until the end of citizens' concerns, or after each citizen?
I'm sorry, what, what, say it one more time?
That was period. Like, they aren't supposed to ask me questions when I'm done?
Well, they can ask you questions when you're done, but when you...
So it's per person?
When you sit down, you can't interact with the council when you're back there.
Okay.
At that podium, if they wanna interact with you, they can interact however they want to.
Okay.
I'm not saying they can't talk to you. I'm saying...
After we were done speaking.
Yes, but you can't just shout back and forth and move. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so that was unclear even to me, so it was probably unclear to them that they couldn't ask me a question when I was done speaking, standing here. And then you have...
I thought I said when they said, when I said, "When you sit back there, you can't..." Okay, I apologize for that.
I mean, it was unclear.
I apologize for that.
And then you started doing it to people up here, and I, from all six of their eyes, it seemed like they were like, "Why can't we do that if he can?"
See, that, that was my fault. I'm just saying, when you go back there, there's no more interaction. Up here, that's what you're here for, to interact with the council.
It wasn't understood, and that is...
I take full responsibility for that one.
That is a big part of...
I mean, I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
The issues happening. Not everybody's brain works the same everybody else's does, and if something isn't coming out clear, it's getting misconstrued and mislabeled, and then once somebody's upset, they're not gonna hear everything. So they didn't understand. I didn't understand. I was just annoyed, as annoyed as them back there. When you started talking to people, I was like, "I don't understand what's happening." So that's like literally just the most perfect example of what needs fixed.
Let me clear that up. When you're at the hot seat on the podium, council, anyone can interact with you, like, for your questions, your answers, whatever.
After we're done.
But when you go back there, we don't want you shouting questions and answers and... But when you go back there, we don't want you shouting questions and answers and making remarks from the back there. Did that clear for everybody? Did everyone understand that? I want you to ask questions. I want them to answer questions. I want them to hear what you had to say.
Does anybody have a question for me while I'm up here though?
Thank you for your email.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you. Very good email. I called you and told you that.
If you all need anything from me, you can email me. My husband is alone with a baby for the first time, so I'm gonna leave.
Congratulations.
Oh, hot hours, it's my niece.
Not a fault, you didn't get fostered?
Um, we're doing teens.
Okay.
Now, have a good night.
You too.
Next person that wants to speak in citizens' concerns? Anybody else out there?
Justin Malden, 136 Gilson Drive. First, I know you guys have a difficult job. I know what it's like to field concerns and field calls, both positive and negative. And so I don't envy the position that you're in, the situation that you're in. But it is a job that you have elected to do and you were chosen and elected to do by the people to represent the people. I'm just going to keep this very, very simple. From a fiscal standpoint, my concern is what the cash flows look like. You know, we're talking about information and things up here. What does that look like? What does the long-term cash flows look like? I understand the enterprise funds, I understand the general fund. So I know we're not talking about water and sewer here, we're talking about this piece of property. But the amount that we're wanting to spend just to get a site ready when this body has allocated $1.5 million seems excessive. And I'm not saying, I'm not standing up here in opposition to a city hall. I'm not standing up here in opposition to doing something. You know, you have the health of your employees, you have facilities and other things like that, I understand it. But when I see we're spending $300,000 on restrooms and a walking track, but then we're trying to say, and I saw a head shake, what I had, it's a board zoning appeal, said $312,000.
Just coming down the bid.
That's the, that's the engineer's bid, that's not the actual bid for the-
But that's, but that's the estimate we have, right? That is the estimate that we have. It's $312,000.
I agree.
So even if you say it's 200,000, say it's two-thirds of that, that's, that is still an excessive amount to be spending on something that is a want and not a need. If city hall is a need, then that needs to be the priority and fiscal responsibility should take effect and other things need to be pushed off to the side. We need to be focusing on things like that. Be fiscally conservative, represent your people. I know it is a tough job in educating the public, help, you know, for them to understand what you guys are doing and what you guys are going through. It's a battle you're always going to face, no matter what. No matter what you do, you're never going to make everybody happy and you can't do it. You can't make everyone happy and that's something that you have to, have to accept in your seat. But I would just ask to be thorough with it. Make sure that there are some long-term, solid numbers, you know, cash flow analysis is done and that if this is a need, that the want becomes secondary and that maybe, you know, reconsider some of those things. If this is a priority, make this a priority. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Why are we paying good money for these estimates if they're not any good?
We have to do that in order to get the plan. Okay, our projects go in steps, okay? One, we have to find a place we want to buy, okay? And when I get here, you guys say, give me numbers, give me numbers. I can only give you estimates. I can't call the contractor and say, I need to know how much it's going to cost to build this building on this land. Those are engineering estimates from price costs from wherever their engineering firm is from. Like, I've spoken to several people about the excavation. If we do it, if it gets bid level, that price, he said guarantees one million off, maybe cut it in half. But I'm still, if you don't want, I mean, I'm not saying that's the way to go, I'm saying that, I've talked to people. Do we, did we pay for the engineering estimate on the bathrooms, for example? Is that something we paid or is that free? That was done back after, before this was in play. That was done, it's just to draw the plans up. You had to have plans, take the planning commission. Do we, do we pay for that? Yeah. And then all we're doing, all this process we're in right now, it goes out the bid. The bids come back, y'all, y'all say, nope, we're not bidding, then it's done, it's a done deal. That's how it works.
And then that, that bill for those, that estimate was how much? Do we remember what that was, Scott?
Eleven thousand.
$11,000 for a bid, it's no good.
That was a- It's not a bid. That's the, that's the drawings. What are you, are you talking about the engineering plans?
He just said about the bathrooms.
Is that what you're talking about, Anthony? Is it was $11,000 for an engineering bid on the bathrooms? That's what I'm asking. What, what, what was the 11,000?
I got it here, I'll research it, but it wasn't $11,000. We paid Evan Watts, mid-10 engineering, the last 12 months, $110,000, $175,000.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember that. Yeah, these are just the plans they draw.
What was the bill on the 11,000? What was it for? On the very back of it, or is it in the middle? $11,000 is said to be for the bathrooms?
There's, he gave to us an estimate. We asked him. He gave us $313,000 that has been distributed for the bathrooms. He has billed us specifically for that. Really, I don't know. Evan.
You know, I understand that we want to say hard numbers and why don't we start?
I don't have, wait, did you leave it up, Scott? Just see what that was?
I understand, Steve. I didn't know when I voted for that, that we would have to pay for, I didn't understand that. Pay for an engineering estimate on the bathrooms. That's already been paid, that's done. All y'all voted for was to send this to the paper and say, how much is it going to cost to build this? We're bidding it out. Those bids are going to be out and y'all say, nope, don't want to buy that, and it's done. It's over. But you can't take it to planning without, without a plan. Okay. I mean, y'all know that as realtors and stuff, but I would like to be able to say, okay, these are the exact figures of what it's going to cost. An engineer's not going to give that to you. It has to get to the bid process to get the exact figures. So engineers are going to price it higher than they, listen, because they don't want to be short. Okay.
Do you have that from mid-10 engineering?
That was done- Those-
Mid-10 engineering?
Those small checks or the big? I think that was done before y'all even got on the council. Oh, okay. Because the last one was Barge, who we use now.
Mid-10 was for the bathrooms. I don't have, wait, not, I can tell you that.
I'm not, but it's-
I mean, that's, that, that number is the engineering estimate. It's not a bid, it's not what it's going to call, that's the engineering estimate.
Yeah, my question concerned about that was, I believe you answered that, is just that if I vote to, to get a bid, I just, if I, if there's an extra bill attached for the- If it ends on what you're asking for. When I brought that in front of y'all, that bill, that bid was already voted on, that money was already spent last council. You didn't vote on spending, it's already spent. See what I'm saying? It wasn't, y'all didn't spend $11,000. That was already spent when y'all got here. So it's kind of like a retainer fee? No, that's to draw the plans and all that stuff for the bathrooms. Okay. And that goes to planning. And when planning approves it, it goes out for bid. That's what y'all saying, we're not paying that, we're not doing this. And you just voted down. There's no obligation, once we get a bid, to do anything. Yes, yes. Yeah, okay. And I think that's my fault for not explaining that properly. I apologize for that, but that's just the way it works. Well, I get it. And that's like- I understand. Any other citizens' concerns? No? All right, do you want to answer that question, Scott?
So we have the last two years, and I can get the last five years if you need to. June 21st, 2024, mid-10 engineering, we paid $9,600 for the hazardous materials survey. We had a couple come in that we paid. In the current fiscal year, beginning of July 1st, January 15th of '25, we paid $175 for the prepared site plan on the new storage building, specific to the water lines, to take the planning commission. March 18th, 2025, we paid mid-10 engineering, $110 for the park bathroom, additional survey points. I don't know that Roger, you know, he was, additional survey points, was that the grading?
I'd say that's when he shot numbers for grading.
He shot numbers for grading, to say we didn't do anything else down there.
Remember, he wanted to take the, 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 and it was a high enough, say, take it off the block.
This is what I'm talking about.
That's what he's estimating to build, for him to build the actual plans. What Ms. Green's talking about is we have an opinion of probable cost for mid-10 engineering. And to come up with what he calls his opinion cost of $313,432. He has construction, $2,300. And design and bidding fees, which is 4% of building construction, he estimates at $11,132. That hasn't been paid to anybody, that would be what the, that'd be included in the total cost of the building.
That's the, okay, thank you.
That was just, that was not presented well to us, I think. And that goes in, in with the building cost?
Yes, that 313 is what he's estimating. Once again, it's not been bid, so every contractor that wants it, they're going to bid to try to get. He gave us something to, to work this.
If we put it out to bid, do we pay the 11,000 at that point? No. Not until we, do you agree on a contract? That's a contract. Okay. The contractor may come back and say, I can do it for $175,000. The engineer say it costs $10,000. So now you're at $185,000. You won't have the exact figures to the contractor visit because the engineer's going to estimate it- Right. Out the roof because they don't want to be short. Yes.
So are we using the same engineer on everything or are we changing, are you changing engineers?
We changed engineers so we don't have a water engineer. In a general, we have the whole firm.
So mid-10 will be doing all of our engineering?
No, Barge. It's a new, because they wouldn't sign the contract that we wanted them to sign because they, and Audrey can explain this to you. All the contracts that were signed in the past by former mayor, left the city very vulnerable. They were open to all liability, according to the contracts that were signed. I sent the first contract to our attorney, he said, you can't sign this. And then those companies weren't willing to change their contracts. Barge was willing to change their contract to put us as a beneficiary on their insurance also. So the city is not responsible for everything. Am I explaining that correctly? Pretty much. Okay. Just want to make sure I don't have a lot of confusion. Because we had, the water line was, what was that? Steve Jones worked for five years here, but he wouldn't have signed the contracts. And obviously, no one's ever sent him to attorney to bring him because if something ever happened to the main street water line, the city's on the hook for all of them. Which it should, nothing happened to us on the side of the road. No more public concern?
That campaign sucks. I'm a great kid, four, five, Justin, I have the least. I'm just trying to figure out, long-term, is there plans for infrastructure to bring more income into the city to, to fund projects? Like, I understand the need for a new city hall, but I feel like the location is bad. I do like the idea of coming up somewhere with the property that is already out of use, that needs to be repurposed. I know that could be done at a, a, definitely a lot cheaper than, than that purchase route. But we need infrastructure. I had sewers, I was built one in 1960s, I think, when the sewer plant was built.
I think that was the first, yeah. They've been in the ground that long.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, we need, we need infrastructure. I know like our sewer pipes, some of them are caving in. Water lines, you know, we've got some old water, well, old water lines now. I would like to see more of a focus on that, on that type of stuff as opposed to things that are not as urgent.
Right.
That's my two cents for it.
Okay. The water sewer lines, I don't know if you, they come out of separate-
They're separate, separate, and that's why-
The general fund is different. We have a five-year planning place. We started replacing water lines and we should have, I think, some other men to be done with by first of June, end of June somewhere, depending on weather and rock. So that'll be another 1,500 feet that we put in and save the city money and move to Carmack. And at that time, hopefully, the sewer bids will be out and they'll start doing the pipe bursting, which is they don't tear the road up, they pipe burst. And then once that's all done, we pave that road.
Right, right.
Then we go to Carmack, we pave that road. We're going to pave Hall as soon as the asphalt plant's open. But we've got to wait till they open the Hall asphalt.
Oh, that's, that's great, that's great news to hear.
So we're going to go from there, there, then Hillcrest.
I appreciate all you guys' work. I'm really nervous in town. Pressure washed up and down the runways. That looked great. I loved seeing that. I appreciate all y'all do. Appreciate all y'all do. And if there's anything I can do, just come to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that everybody? All right, on to the marriage report. I sat at home yesterday and I wrote two pages worth of notes about the things that been going on Facebook, all this silliness, this fabianess, this juvenile stuff. I thought that all left when we lost somebody. But I got just one question for y'all and that's it. How many employees that work here live in the city that are constituents of yours? Six? Eight?
How many employees?
That live in the city that work here? Ten. I've talked to those ten. How many of y'all talked to them about what they thought about city hall or whatever's going on? That's ten voters, ten constituents. It's just a curious question.
Three.
You talked to three? Some, I don't know. And are they giving you negative feedback, positive feedback? You have to tell me, I'm just saying. Feedback?
Yeah.
Okay. But I think that's important. If we have employees that are here that are voters, we should ask them because they work here. And I'll be fighting off with you. I don't spend enough time off to need a new office. I don't need a new office. But this building is making them girls sick. Okay? And as far as the $400,000 building, the DCS building is down on the river. I asked Les Fisher, I said, go check this building out. It's been flooded. Les Fisher reported back to me that the floorboards were still moldy from 2010. They had to be ripped out. So it wasn't an ideal building. It was, it's set up like a warehouse. There's only two offices at the DCS building. The rest of it is wide open. There's no, it had to be, $100,000 wouldn't touch the modifications. The people that put the daycare in there had to get a special grant from the federal government to replace the floors.
Really, as far as I'm concerned, once we find out it flooded, there's no reason to go with it.
I'm just trying to clear up. I want to make sure everybody understands that this isn't a whim. This isn't something that we, we've had, we've tried the Moss building, that didn't work. We tried Upper Ferry, that didn't work. We tried Sunny Hill Lane, that didn't work. I didn't know nothing about this property until the day before. And then when Randy said he'd do it, we tried that. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But let's come up with a plan that works for everybody. I mean, if I can do it for a million dollars, I'd be happy to, let's do it for a million dollars. I don't, it doesn't matter to me how we do it, but we need to come up with a plan to do it. And it doesn't have to be about Walmart, it doesn't have to be on there, you can put it anywhere.
Well, then if you're saying anywhere, what about the Cullen Mansion? What about Digger Poinexter just moved out of his house?
Okay, I'm good with that.
I've had a lot of people to ask me about that. Even though their houses-
It doesn't matter, it's a good place.
You could even buy it, put offices there, the front instead of having a yard.
Make a parking.
Make a parking out of it, Cullen Mansion's fine. And if you have to fix this up, leave the police department down here, make y'all's offices in either two of those places.
That's a great idea.
I don't think we could do Cullen Mansion because it's in rural.
I think somebody, I think somebody bought it historically.
Right, and you got to replace everything.
I spent a lot of time in that house and it wouldn't work, but now the diggers, it's something to work it.
It's on Main Street?
That'd be perfect. I mean, I have no problem with that. A minute, I've seen buildings in Lebanon that were state historic and I've renovated them, lots of offices. The town too. And as far as the courthouse goes, I fought with Jeff Mason about renting, leasing the courthouse the day I came in his office. They've got plans to renovate it, use it themselves. It's the county courthouse. They need to put offices in there. I agree. I talked to Jeff Mason about buying that land in front of him. Went through the steering committee, got a 14-0 approval. Was it a full commission? Got voted down. I worked, I'm trying, I'd rather do it as cheap as possible. But when you vote down this cheap option, next option, see if you vote down, it just keeps going. But I mean, I'm willing to do whatever y'all want me, you tell me to do it, I'll do it. I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't, if you want me to get a price on the, the house and do that, we can do it.
No, but you go ahead and get one.
I guess, I don't know what it is, I don't know what the price is. See if it changes.
See if it changes.
Yeah, I'll let you.
Go ahead and look it up, see how much it costs.
I don't have a.
Not, not really the second, what I'm saying.
I've already talked about it, but I'll let you talk, see what you come up with.
I hope it's the same price you came up with.
That's what, okay.
Hope it lowers.
Because, I want to, I want to put another thing out here, about Facebook and all this stuff, about kickbacks and all this bull stuff. Let me explain something to everybody out there that's listening and watching. I get a football card from the football coach every year for free football games. You know what I do with that card? I give it to the finance officer, because it's against the rules for me to take, because it's a gratuity. I got tickets to the Pregnancy Health Center Ball. I turn those in. I call them, I can't take these, because it's a gratuity. I am damn sure not gonna take money from some project to benefit other people, because I'm not going to prison for nobody. So we can clear that up right now. All right, enough of that. Let's go to committee reports. Anybody got anything on the committee reports?
I'd just like to say, with the new engineering firm, that's gonna help us as a frontline supervisor. There's a lot of things going on in the plant, and believe me, we'd rather do it ourselves. And we do about everything ourselves. But it gives me the option. I've got a few things that probably could end up affecting our permit. And if I need to engineer, I can actually call our engineer up, and then let Scott and Cindy know. Engineer will come down, I'm showing him what I got. That gets the ball rolling a lot faster for me. And so, the new deal, we got an engineer, I just think it's real good for the department.
Anybody else?
Most of you probably know or seen us in McDonald's parking lot. And the reason for that was, we have a water line that runs through there. I don't know if you remember back when Old Twenty-Five used to run through there in Texco, and all that stuff there.
I do.
Anyway, our water line runs through McDonald's parking lot, home out in front of motel, whatever. Anyway, we had a, a water leak, and we looked for fifty-one days trying to find this leak, and we had to call a company that specializes in this. And we finally found it. It's on an eight-inch water main. Rusty was pumping extra two hundred thousand gallons a day. But in those fifty-one days, we lost a total of ten point five million gallons of water. Anyway, we ended up fixing the leak. It was fourteen foot down, two, went through.
Under two roads.
Under two roads, the old Highway Twenty-Five, all that. We, we finally found it and got it fixed. And, you know, I, I had the girls in the office to run the numbers, and, you know, it was seventy-seven thousand dollars lost revenue in that ten and a half million gallons. I just want to let everybody know, that's why we was in McDonald's parking lot.
Well, thank you for letting me know when I called you.
And it's a good thing we had the equipment we had, or we wouldn't have been able to do it.
Yeah, we had, we had the.
We had you the trench box for the first time.
And all that stuff. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes. We don't normally work in McDonald's parking lots in people's yards, but hey. Anybody else?
We also had, well, two weeks ago, we had our annual, it's not really an annual, it's every one to, one year, one and a half year sanitary survey on the water department, water system. I had hoped to get the final report from T-Dat back to present to y'all tonight, but I don't have it yet. They haven't sent it in. I think we, we did very well on it. I, I mean, they went over me thoroughly for a day, and then they went over Derek's department for a day. I don't have the score yet. I'll bring that thing next month when I, when I get the final report. But I feel like we're doing very well. I feel like we'll be in the high nineties on, on our score. So, that's all I've got to report, but I hope to present that tonight, but I didn't get the final paperwork. The financial report for the street age mark thirty-one. You have that report. You asked me to post it to the website, which I did the next day. And I did the same with this one. The general fund, we have on hand, five million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, or four hundred and twelve dollars. That's five, two, one, eight, four, one, two. That's how much cash is in the general fund for use as the council decides. Street age cash, we have two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, which will be used for street paving when that time comes. And the water sewer fund, we have two million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars available for the projects that we just laid out there in the workshop. We have debt in the water sewer fund of one million, five hundred, ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. General fund cash ratio is a hundred and twenty-six to one. Means we can pay off our debts in the general fund a hundred and twenty-six times before we have a problem. Water and sewer fund, our cash ratio is thirteen to one, very solvent there. But that will decrease once these projects get rolling, and that's, will be soon. Water and sewer debt service ratio, three point four to one, which means we are able to service our debt. We have established a policy that we would not go below one point five to one. So we would always have ability to pay off debt and still profit. I would point out on page one of your report, highlighted A, to show you cash. But I want to make sure, my goal is to make sure you got accurate information, so that you know what we're doing with it, okay? If you look down to point B, at the end of March, our revenues exceeded expenses by two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Depending on your decisions for the rest of the month, dictate where that comes, or how that's affected.
Could you please tell us how much money was in the books when I walked in the front door?
I don't remember exactly, Mayor, but it would have been five point two to five point four, somewhere around in that area.
So all the improvements we've done, we're still back to even on the money?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
The reason for that is, we made the excess reserves. We talked with the banks, we talked with local government investment pool, which had been set up by the prior administration. We just hadn't funded it, because we've got the same money from the banks. But that changed, and interest rates went up. So we've been drawing anywhere from fourteen to twenty-four thousand dollars a month in the general fund off of our savings, reserves. You will note, and I'll say again, just so we make sure. My recommendation in the general fund is always to keep one point five million dollars in the operating fund, so you don't have to worry about ever making payroll. As you look at your budget sheet, there's three point, three million dollars available for council use, benefit the citizens however you want. And I will say, and I just talked to the mayor about this yesterday. We did the extra work, and it's been mentioned tonight, using reserves for water sewer. Technically, you can't do it, but we did communicate, which all of you got that communication, a while back, or the prior council did. And if we wanted to, we could use, if the comptroller approves it, because they don't want you to do it, okay? And it appears to me, we would have at least a good argument to say, hey, we could move for that bank erosion. We could pay our part. And if you wanted to go for water lines that way, we could ask the comptroller. I don't know whether they'd approve it or not, but we can sure make a good effort to say, hey, we're not using that reserve for anything else. We can use it for water lines and sewer lines. We hadn't even talked about these guys yet, okay? Because you can't do anything with sewer plant until the sewer lines are fixed, and the water plant is making it happen. But those two things, we will acquire money from the federal government in big ways, okay? Multi-millions. So, I'll just throw that out. Just as I said in the workshop. Your mission in spending the town's money should be based on what is our mission, what is your goal. And that's where you have to make those decisions. I'll do everything I can, my staff will do everything I can to implement whatever you come up with, as what you think is best for the town. And I'll also, if you ask my opinion on things, I'll give it to you, okay?
Are we in debt at all, right now? In debt, in the red, right now? In debt that, that we owe?
We owe one point five million dollars on state revolving fund loans.
So we still owe that?
Yep. But that comes out of the water sewer fund. It's thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars a month that we have to pay, a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. When we get that sewer line, SRF, and that project is done, okay? Get the two point seven million dollars, they can give five hundred and forty thousand dollars of it. We'll have two point one million additional debt to add to that one point five. And that in itself will double payments we come, it'll be, it'll be about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year that we'll have to fund out of the water sewer fund to pay for that.
Okay. It's a lot of money.
Sure is. Can it happen? Yes. Wouldn't let us go this far, if it couldn't happen. But, that is an alternative. Whether the comptroller will approve it or not, I don't know. I think they'd do the bank erosion, because it's an unusual thing, but just for regular water lines, I don't know. Because they don't want you to do that. They want the water sewer fund to stand on its own. Because it's a business, it's to be operated as a business.
Do you want to let them know about the two other things we got going, just in case? Don't give out the numbers and stuff of what we're, we're working on?
Remind me.
The five and the four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, CDVG and.
We have applied for a community development block grant for five hundred thousand dollars.
I'll see, a grant for the water line?
We've applied for it. We got denied last year, okay? We reduced the amount we asked for. Whether we get it or not, don't know. But we will still have our own money. It won't be that we get that money and we don't have to match. We'll have a certain percentage to match, okay? So it's the same way for water lines as it did for Joe's Fire Engine, that was two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We had to pay a portion of our funds, because they always want you to do a match.
Yes.
Should I do what you asked me to do?
Yeah. I just wanted them to know that we have other things in the works that we just don't put out until we get confirmation. I mean, I hate to say, yeah, we applied for four and six seven thousand, hoping to get it this year, and we'll do it again next. Plus, there's a five million dollar one through the court that they're working on.
What are you referring to there, since we, again, prior administrations got us in with the court? Again, this should be a collaborative effort across administrations for the benefit of the people. Got the foot in the door, we finally got that project worked out. And because that project got worked out, they've indicated, okay, we may have, we may have monies available to help with the water lines. And it's always a may. You hear the federal government as much as I do. They don't know that it's going to be there. But it's a possibility that we can get some water line, and that's where those monies are going to have to come after we've done, done what we've got.
You think we'll ever run out of money to finish these water, water lines? And if so?
Do I, my professional opinion, will we run out of money? The answer is no, not as long as I got anything to do with it. We're gonna keep one and a half million in the water sewer fund. Because I don't want to go home at night wondering if I make payroll. So, the answer is, will we run out of money? Not on my watch, unless we have an earthquake near the water line and place it. Then, then you have a big issue. Will we ever be, what was the latter part, never run out of money?
And if so, what happens then?
What happens if we run out of money? State, federal government, but in my opinion, what we're doing, we're not going to run out of, out of money. Dale asked, two, three months ago, is it sustainable? I've talked with both administrations about what is sustainable. And I have it written on my calendar and highlighted, is it sustainable? And the answer is, I'm personally, professionally, am not going to recommend something to the town that I don't think can be carried on. In the general fund, revenues will exceed expenses. Once you've got your, the things in the general fund that can be funded for general fund are going to be, you're going to have tax revenues there. It's not a property tax issue. Property tax doesn't pay for any department anymore, okay? Our major revenue is not property tax, okay? We can't influence things like today, we researched for the budget, Terry Collins. Our assessed value went down by a million dollars. And so I'm thinking, okay, can you write it up? And she said, well, why would that be? Well, Saveway Building, Saveway, not Saveway, down on Industrial Drive. Those two buildings at the Smith County Department of Education, those come off our tax books, because they're purchased by the county. So we will collect less property tax next year than we did this year. That doesn't bother me a great deal, because I know property tax is not our major revenue. Sales tax, sales tax, since I've been doing this, has gone up each year. Budget estimates you have are conservative, which I told you on the front end. I always budget revenue conservatively, because I don't want overstate revenue.
Well, have you ever thought if they come in, if the state comes in here and tires the bluff down across the bridge? You think boots gonna go around, or people live down off Highway Seven, you go to Lebanon? Then where's your income tax money gonna come from?
Sales.
Some of sales tax.
Ms. Green, I don't have an answer for that.
I'm just saying, we gotta kind of, we gotta plan ahead. Kind of plan ahead, you never know when that's gonna happen.
I would say if that's gonna happen, then I would look at the other options, say, well, Orange was sewer plant sitting right down there. They're gonna need a place, that's where your county sewer plant comes into a plant.
That's why it's all holes.
Okay, there's a whole lot of variables. But yes, that's the kind of thinking that's there. And yes, I think about a lot of things. Have I thought about that particular one? No, I haven't. Best I can tell people that are gonna go to Walmart is. They may not buy nothing, but they're going to Walmart, because I can see everybody at Walmart.
But we don't get all those taxes. Don't we split it to the county?
County, yes, yeah, they get some, but we get our share. Really want to make the revenues go, build businesses in the town, Cartiche, that are paying excise tax, paying business tax, and making profits. That's one of the places that you can build revenues. We don't have a lot of options to build revenues in the general fund, okay? But if you've got a lot of successful businesses, they will pay, you know, their corporate structure, LLC, they'll pay excise tax, and they will pay business tax. But neither one of those is going to fund, the sales taxes.
All right. First item on the agenda is unfinished business, a city mowing rebid contract.
May I ask what we, the bid was last year? So I'm assuming the major increase is gasoline or?
I'd say gasoline, oil, you know, gasoline, two cycle oil, stuff like that, and I mean, I'll double the price. I can't speak for the bigs, I don't know what he's based it on.
I might as well just go and say.
Any discussion? Wait, did it say, which one? Oh, I'll say, okay. No discussion? Roll call, please.
Captain McGree?
Yes.
Captain McGree?
Yes.
Talk to my Greg, please. Talk to my message.
Yes.
Talk to my daddy.
Yes.
Ask him what's happening.
Yes. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda, second reading of purchasing policy, C zero, two zero, two, five zero, three zero, six, two. Upping the. Report, instead of reporting ten thousand dollar bills, Scott reports a twenty-five thousand dollar bill. After twenty-five thousand.
Can you clear that up, Scott, reporting, or is it actually without approval?
I'm sorry, he approves it, but that's what he shows on your report.
It's purchasing policy request, is, is it, it's a attempt to. Raise the limit for bids from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, which the law now allows, it used to not allow it, okay? That's one aspect of it, the other aspect of it, can you park or all or none, you can approve. But while we're doing that, we're saying, instead of a purchase order having to go through all the approval processes from two thousand to ten thousand, it used to be two hundred dollars, prior administration fixed that, okay? But, instead of going from ten, or two to ten, we're saying, they can expend monies, okay, from ten to twenty-five, by getting through informal bids, okay? Which carries over the policy that we implemented the, the last time. But it increases that threshold from ten to twenty-five. But anything that's twenty-five or more, it's got to be bid out, because we do not have what's called a full-time purchasing agent. If you have a full-time purchasing agent, the law allows you to increase bid limits to fifty thousand dollars.
I'm still misunderstood, is this board approval or just without bid approval? Ten thousand for no board approval, I mean, twenty-five thousand if, if we, for no board approval?
We can make that whatever we want, we're saying between ten and twenty-five. We can, we can do it whatever area you guys want it, okay? It's just more streamlined and making use of new law. We can do that, if you don't have confidence that too much money's going to be spent, if you don't trust these guys to do their due diligence. Then, I would say just keep it like it is. Two aspects. And do I have to report something for you guys to approve, that's ten thousand or more, we can keep that, if that's what you want to do. Primarily, the biggest part of that is to increase the bid amount, okay? The first one is written in nineteen eighty-three, we're saying, and the state is saying, hey, ten thousand, that's a very low limit, okay? And so they've increased it to twenty-five thousand if it's approved by the local, so for any bid, if it's twenty-five or more. We will, we have to have, we have to bid it out, when you purchase, I should say, twenty-five or more, we have to purchase it, or bid it out. If it's between zero dollar or one dollar and twenty-four ninety-nine, we can do whatever you have to do with it, okay? As far as council approval.
So that's why most municipalities have raised their limit and done this up to twenty-five thousand dollars, because the municipal purchasing law says that. You can now raise that bid threshold up to twenty-five thousand dollars, so anything twenty-five thousand or under, doesn't have to be subject to competitive bidding requirements and advertising. You know, it's pretty inefficient if you've got a two thousand dollar purchase or a ten thousand dollar purchase or a fourteen thousand dollar purchase, to have to advertise and bid that out over several weeks. So, that's why most cities have, have done this and raised their limit to twenty-five thousand. Because it's not subject to that state requirement.
I want to say that, that's not, I don't, it's not the things, I don't trust them, I do trust them, so, I just want to know that I trust what they're doing.
Well. Yeah, I mean, if they want, I make, I make a motion we suspend Robert's rules so that Rusty can speak. This, this is not. Hold on.
All in favor?
All in favor? All right, now Rusty.
This, this is not apples to apples at this point, but there's a chemical that I buy, that I, that the seedie depends on, you don't have water without it. I buy it, in what's called mini bulk, and, and there's steady price increases in that. We're already at the point now where I'm spending over seven thousand dollars on an order, which I know that don't bust to ten thousand, but I have to now. Get approval through finance and the mayor's signature just to buy the stuff that's necessary to keep the plant running. At the current rate of increase, at the way these chemicals are going, that's going to go over ten thousand dollars in a few years. Now, let's say I have to order this chemical on, or I have to have it delivered on the first or second or the month, or a day or two after the last meeting. I'm gonna have to wait for a whole month to get your approval. Now, I guess you could declare an emergency, but that's what we're getting into.
But are we not set up on a, I mean, like if I. I don't know how to say it, if I give something and I put it into my elevate, I've got a plan set up with that company that I've got thirty days to pay you, fifteen days to pay your, what, do we not have that with these companies?
What I'm saying is, I would have to order this, uh, without your approval, because it's like a two-week lead time.
Okay.
And, and then hope that you approve it, which, to be perfectly honest, if you want water, you can't deny. It's sort of, a lot of times you hear us talk about how when we do projects or we do things, it moves glacially, it's so slow because of all these hoops we have to jump through. It's not, it's not a matter of, of us wanting just unlimited control on how to spin things, it's just a matter of, of simplifying systems. And making it to where it's not such a, I mean, if, if, and it will in a few years, that, that delivery alone will get over ten thousand dollars. And I, I'll have to have, we'll have to make some kind of exceptions. I mean, I can't wait till the next meeting to get your approval to order, you know, I'll run out.
I'll make some, I'll make.
Go ahead, say it's seven thousand.
It is today. But it, but in a few years, it'll be over.
Go ahead, Steve.
It's streamlined the process, but we still have the checks and balances there. I've got three flow charts that I have to keep up with for my permit, two of them are downright at this moment, they're thirty-year old. So just say I get three quotes, they come in twelve thousand, thirteen thousand, eighteen thousand. If I get those quotes, if, if we have approval up to fifteen thousand, I can come down to Scott and the mayor, here's my three quotes, I'm doing the same thing I'm doing now for ten thousand. But once I get the approval and they sign off on it, I can be getting them coming and putting them, if it's still where it is now.